Hi, we're going to call this meeting to order. It is, I, let's see.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did they, did they move the flag? Is it over there?
It's usually over here. We can't see it either way.
Welcome, everybody. We are going to begin with public comment on agenda items. Do we have anyone here who would like to offer public comment on agenda items?
Yes, I do.
Seeing none, we will hold the rest of that time until the end of the meeting. Does anyone have school board member updates? Got anything, Jenny?
By it, I will say legislatively, there is a lot going on in the state of New Hampshire right now. We do get a lot of updates from the New Hampshire School Boards Association. Everybody, I think, on the board and Dr. Costa are keeping a close eye on that. And we encourage everyone to keep an eye on that for yourself.
We have anything big for me from PTA or the rec department? Let's ask Mr. Robitaille to come on down.
That's the first time I've gotten applause walking up here, so thank you. All right. Hope everyone's doing well. Just going to go through a few items, things that have been going on at Center School and coming up. We had a great all-school meeting on January 17th and our theme was kindness matters. It was a good time to review our SOAR rules after coming back from the holiday vacation. So that was a great time to get the whole student body together. I did include a few items that we've been working on as a school this year, just to keep the board updated. Obviously, the science of reading's been a big buzz topic. So one of the thing, one of the small things I took away from Letters for Administrators was the, the idea for a Word of the Week program. So that's something we've incorporated in our morning message every day. Students are presented with the word, part of speech, definition, some fun sentences that go along with it. Teachers are provided with some activity ideas that they can incorporate as well throughout the week. So it's fun when kids come up to me and say, "Oh, Mr. Robitaille, it's frigid outside." Because that was the word that was introduced the week prior. So just another thing to promote literacy in the building. Also talked a little bit about our student support team meetings that are part of our RTI model that we've kind of rebranded and gotten back off the ground this year. Hundredth Day of School was last week, so that was, it's always a great thing to celebrate, you know, preschool through second grade. So the students really had a fun time putting some activities and outfits together. So that was awesome. And then I just wanted to highlight too, some mid-year benchmark data went home recently. So did hear from some families, but we always encourage any family that has any questions about data that we do share and goes home to reach out to the classroom teacher or myself. Be happy to have conversations to explain that a little more clearly if needed. And just coming up, we do have a lot of great literacy events coming up in March. We have One School, One Book we're going to kick off in March. We're going to have an author visit. We're going to have guest reader days, character day. So just a lot of exciting things around literacy coming up in March after the vacation. And I believe that is the synopsis of my report. If the board has any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
I do.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
What is the climate right now at Center School? And is there anything that we need to help it on?
I'd like to say, you know, from the time I've got here, we've worked a lot on trust between administration and staff. I think it's something, you know, I, I think staff were, you know, ready for a different perspective. And it's just something I'm working on every day. I'm trying to provide transparent communication with people and just trying to be upfront where I am as a, as a school leader and really get to know, you know, the constituents of the building. And I think we've done a good job trying to hear where the staff want to go. I don't think there's anything I need in particular assistance on right now, but I do appreciate all of the board's support this year getting me up and running.
Well, I know right now it's a tough time because it's sick, a lot of illness, a lot of subs.
Yep.
And it's a hairy time for teachers and for administrators.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've kind of been banged up the last few weeks. I have to give kudos to my staff. There's been a lot of people pulled in a lot of different directions. A lot of people have stepped up to help those that have been out. We've had a lot of kids out too. So, you know, we are looking forward to February vacation and, you know, hopefully everybody gets healthy. But yes, our absence list has been high and we've had a lot of staff members out. We did have two paraprofessional resignations, you know, within the last month. One was for career advancement, so we wish her the best. But we did interview two great candidates and we're hoping to bring them on board. So I'm hoping to be fully staffed when we get back after vacation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think we're all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. All right, Mr. Sadler, come on down.
All right.
Did you bring a cheering section?
Yeah, I know. I didn't bring a cheering section. I like that though. That was good.
I like that from Mark.
All right. Hi, everyone. Just a few things going on, a few things, but a few big things going on. The Penny Drive, our community drive we always do this time of year is taking place. So it's a spare change drive. We remind the kids that all the time. So it's great walking around the classrooms and seeing the students really get involved with it and remembering that, you know, every little bit helps and counts. So we'll hopefully have a total at the March Board meeting. And then we'll have our charitable organization kind of earmarked and we'll have all that ready to go. We're participating in Warm Spirit Days on Fridays in February and March. Our fifth grade classes picked those out for us and they did a phenomenal job at our school-wide morning meeting last month, kind of coming up and demonstrating and modeling that. I'm going to skip over Global Play Day because my team's going to talk about that in a minute. But other coming up in March will be our variety show, tentatively. One of the last weeks of March, I know there's some communication about exact date, so we'll keep you in the loop with that. It's either the third or fourth week of March. But just a great opportunity for students to come up and showcase their skills and talents. It's, when we say variety show, it's a variety of wonderful acts. So if you've never seen it, try to come. And if you can't come, check it out online or on TV. And then finally, actually, one of the teachers here to present today, Mrs. Lazaric and Mr. Shrack and then Mrs. Carlson are going to be reopening up their outdoor nature slash gardening club, doing it a little bit differently this year. But I encourage parents to really, when we send out the flyers on Friday, make sure you're checking your email. Because a lot of times that's when the signups for these kind of opportunities come and we don't want anyone to miss out. So just take a look at it and it's a really wonderful opportunity. We're hoping to put some school gardens in at Marston School. We've got a lot of beautiful outdoor space and some that we really don't use with kids. So how can we get kids on there and how can we teach them a little more about nature and the environment? So I'm really excited for some of the projects that are going to come out of the work the students are going to do. I'll take questions and then I'll invite my team up. Yeah, I think, you know, that is what's impacting the climate. I am, you know, I think people right now are pretty happy. You know, we work pretty hard to make sure people want to come to work and I think it pays off for us in the long run. We also keep pretty open communication about what's going on in the school and how can we support one another. But yeah, when you're having 50 to 65 kids out a day, that's, you know, to some extent you think, oh, there's less kids in the classroom. But you can't really advance the curriculum. It's hard to go on to the next lesson in math when you have five kids sitting in front of you knowing you're going to have to reteach it to 15 when they get back. And then guest teachers, you know, I just encourage anyone in the community that has a little time on their hands to reach out to Ms. Kathy Tuck at the SAU, get a guest teacher application. Even if you only have one or two days available or a couple of half-days available, you know, it always helps out in the schools. But yeah, guest teacher coverage, but again, like Mr. Robitaille said, our staff's been phenomenal in really jumping up and getting involved and helping out whenever they can. And we truly appreciate everyone and we try to let them know that and lean on different groups at different times so we don't strain any one part of our system. But that's probably the biggest impact right now, for sure. But, you know, it's getting close to February break and they're building our arrow out a little bit and kids will take their germs and it'll be nice.
That would be good.
Yes. So I'm going to invite up Mrs. Hannah Lazaric and Mrs. Jessica Pennington and our students. They're going to talk a little about Global Play Day. So just to give you a background on what we're doing here, some of our teachers have been participating in the community read of Anxious Generation. And one of the sections talked a lot about unstructured play, how we don't have as much time where kids just go play. They, they fight boredom, they come up with problem solving, they learn how to socialize. So Global Play Day was actually an initiative that Mrs. Pennington brought forth last year that she read about and I'll let them talk a little more about it. But Marston decided to go all-in this year and participate on Wednesday, February 5th. So they're going to share some of their experiences with that and a little more information. So thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jessica Pennington. I teach fifth grade at Marston. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and share our experience about Global School Play Day. Global School Play Day began in 2015 by a group of educators who were inspired by their observations of the diminishing opportunities for unstructured play in schools and the increasing focus on standardized testing and academic pressures. They believed that play was a crucial part of a child's social and emotional and cognitive development and they wanted to create a movement that would bring attention to the value of play and learning and foster a global conversation about the role of play in education. The inaugural Global School Play Day took place on February 4th, 2015 and involved over 65,000 schools, 65,000 students, excuse me, from around the world. And over the years, the event has gained momentum with an increasing number of schools and educators participating each year. The movement was gained support from educators and parents and organizations globally and it continues to grow as more schools recognize the importance of balancing academic rigor with the benefits of play in a child's overall development. Today, it is celebrated in more than 81 countries and over 2.1 million students participating. There are many research-backed benefits to unstructured play and the dedication to this day. Some include enhancing creativity, problem-solving and social skills, improves mental health and reduces stress, encourages collaboration and teamwork, supports academic success by fostering curiosity and engagement. It encompasses social and emotional learning goals and reinforces positive school culture. And it strengthens the relationship between peers and students and teachers. We have been celebrating Global School Play Day at Marston for about three years now. And over the years of implementing this day at Marston, it has grown in teacher participation and the length of time that teachers have dedicated their day to.
Hi, everyone. I'm Hannah Lazaric. I'm a third grade teacher at Marston. And so as Mr. Sadler was saying, and as you know, SAU 90 teamed up with the Lane Library to do this book club this year. And so we read The Anxious Generation and it focuses on how the introduction of smartphones to children's lives has really created more anxiety and depression among children and adolescents. And the author gives us four action steps that we can take, big things that can create a big impact. And they are no smartphones before high school, no social media before the age of 16, phone-free schools, and the one that we're focusing on today, far more unstructured, unsupervised play and childhood independence. So during these book club discussions, parents, educators and community members discussed ways we can work on these four recommendations. And I started talking about how our school has been doing Global School Play Day. And as Jess stated, this is a day that's globally recognized in which kids are given time for unstructured play. And we know that kids are really busy. They have a lot going on, so to dedicate this one day in school is really important for a lot of them. And we have noticed that it's had a really positive result in our school. So upon reflection, my students reported that they enjoyed this because it gave them time to connect with their friends, make new friends, be active, be creative and have fun. And we came up with a huge list of things that they learned. Jess, do you mind going to the next slide? And I'm sure some of these students here will share some of them with you, but some of the highlights are on the slides here that I think really speak for themselves. So we, as educators, find this day incredibly important and we appreciate the opportunity to participate in this global initiative. So we just wanted to thank our administrators, Dr. Costa and the school board for supporting this. And I'm going to turn it over to our students who are excited to share their experiences with you.
Hi, I'm Parker Felzone and I have something to say about Global School Play Day. Global Play Day was a day that I learned a lot about my friends. It helps me understand more about my classmates and learn their likes and dislikes. To adults, it does not make sense to have a day of school for just playing when we have recess and we can play after school. But this is a chance to play in the school building and even learn about our teachers. A good relationship with our classmates and teachers will make our school days better. And I think that Global Play Day should go to all the Hampton schools. It was so fun. Thank you for giving me your time.
Hi, I'm Devon Lehman. Global Play Day was very important for kids of all ages. It helps students make new friends or grow friendships stronger. Kids in Marston got to know each other way better just after an hour of play than many days of conversation. We told each other stories and laughed together. All my fellow students and I had an amazing day of play and laughter. Even though students aren't being educated in math or writing and other school subjects, they are being educated in play and conversation, which will boost kids' social skills. You might be thinking that kids can play after school, but a lot of the time, all the members of the class are not around to play that day. But when you play at school, everyone is there unless someone's absent that day. Ever since Global Play Day, I've known my classmates way better. Thank you.
Good job, Devon.
Hi, I'm Grace McLeod. Global Play Day is an important day for kids. It teaches kids the importance of play and helps kids make different friends. Global Play Day helps kids make new friends because with a day of play, you can know some of your classmates better than a year of conversation. Global Play Day is important because sometimes kids need to take a break from schoolwork and have a day of play. It helps kids explore the creativity, social interactions and problem-solving skills. It is also important because it helps kids focus on having fun, imagination and social growth. Thank you.
Thanks, Grace.
My name is, my name is Sophie and I'm in Mrs. Lazaric's third grade class. I think unstructured play was really fun because we didn't have to do our normal things such as reading, writing, math and science. My favorite part was getting to turn over tables and make forts and use classroom materials in ways we don't normally use them. I think it's important because kids should get a day to burn energy without having just recess. It's also important to play with other kids that you don't usually play with. I learned that you don't need screens to have fun.
Good job, Sophia.
Hi, my name is Andrew and I'm in Mrs. Lazaric's third grade class. I like Global Play Day because we got to interact with each other for a longer period of time. It required us to work together and figure out that what we wanted to do the whole, the whole time to agree with each other. I also liked that we had a longer time to play. My personal favorite was when the class decided to make things to buy and buy things from each other. Some made forts, others made stores or creative things. It got everyone to be creative in what they wanted to sell and when they had to decide how much they wanted to sell for it. The person at the end with the most amount of money won. Global Play Day was so much fun. I wish we had one each a month.
Thank you, Andrew.
We also have a short video to share with you.
Global Play Day is important because the kids, like, they work six hours a day and you just always like need a break one day. So it's like vacation, but in school for playing. So it's like important to get some play out.
I think it's good for kids to have a break and to have time to interact with each other and like play games with each other, have fun for a day.
Like, it's good to learn, but it's also good to have like time to like socialize with like your friends and other people.
Well, it's just like a fun opportunity to like just play all day without like any schoolwork. You still have lunch and recess, but like everything else is different because all you do is play.
I think they should because then kids can have a day to socialize with people a little more and get to maybe make some new friends.
So thank you, you know, again, I just thank you to the board. These opportunities are amazing because we get to come out and showcase the really great things happening inside of our schools that our teachers are doing with the students. So we just appreciate it. And then a big thank you to all of our students and staff who came out this evening to join us for the school board. If you have any questions for anyone, otherwise we'll let them enjoy their evening.
Anybody have any questions before they go?
Thank you again.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
Come on down.
All right, tough act to follow there, but I'll do my best. Good evening, everyone. How are we doing today? We have exciting things going on over at Hampton Academy. Our eighth graders are getting older and they are going to start their transitioning into the high school. So we've been partnering with them to get them acclimated as best they can so the transition is smooth as possible. Course selection is open for the students. It will open up on the 13th. Notification has been sent out, so check your emails on that. On the Thursday, the 13th, the World Language Department will be doing a presentation for our eighth graders, describing the course offerings that they'll be running over there and just giving a general sense of what kind of courses they can take when they're over at the high school. On the 18th, Tuesday, the 18th, the Winnicott High School Jazz Band will be coming over as along with the high school counselors to talk a little bit about, see the performance, see what the jazz band does, but also to meet the counselors that they will be having to help ease that transition. On March 5th, they will have the Step Up Day. Well, the eighth grade will walk over to Winnicott High School, take a tour of the high school and, and learn everything like that. We want to congratulate our December Students of the Month, Joey Newman, Whitney Allen, Ethan Hardy, Ryan Romanowski, Ty Homanix, Coletta Roy, Mia Marku and Chase Hamilton. Well done there. On March 3rd, we are going to be doing our Read Across America in collaboration with Ms. Mary Saunders over at the library. So we're going to have tons of fun events there. Drop Everything and Read during lunch, some interactive challenges in the library, bookmark making. On March 10th, we will be having a parent meeting for Quebec at 6:30 PM. Also, keep an eye out for the Hampton Academy Players Performance of the Yearbook this, this March. And we are excited to launch our lacrosse program for both the boys and the girls. We had a great meeting with our Steadman Committee and we were able to shuffle some unused funds around to explore an opportunity that's growing really well in the area and give some students the opportunity to represent their school. Ski Club wrapped up. Big thank you to Jackie Kennedy and Ellen Morrissey for that. It was definitely fun. We are in the process of hiring a track coach though. If anybody knows any track coaches, we are looking. Tell them to run over. And that's, that's all we got there. I will open it up to questions.
I would ask the same question. How's the climate at the academy?
We're doing well. We've been collaborating with our Sunshine Committee, Sally Sunshine. They've been doing great things for everyone during our early release day. We had a, bringing a potluck, Super Bowl-style luncheon. And then we have a faculty breakfast coming in right before the vacation. So, you know, we're, we're ready for, the sicknesses have been around. It's been a weird year this year. But we, I think, are going in strong. So we're excited for everything. The ski club was great. It was able to break it up and see a lot of good opportunities going on. I do want to shout out to our ESOL teacher, Lauren Katz. She took some of our students down to do some sledding. Some kids from other countries who have never actually seen snow participate in some of the actions. And similar with the ski club too. We had some students who saw snow for the first time in November and then they're going down greens and blues by the time everything was all done. So it was pretty exciting to see. But yeah, morale's really good so far, so.
And how's subbing doing?
Subbing's been great. Yeah, it's been great. Yeah, everyone's been, we've got an influx back from the holiday vacation and we've been doing really well filling those, all the positions. So we're doing great.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. DeSylvan Apptin?
Good evening. I just wanted to highlight one, another project that some of our kids have done. And I think you heard that on January 6th, Northeast Passage had come and Marston had done that videotape. So one of our teachers followed up with that process. And during that session, the kids were focusing on goal-setting and stepping outside their comfort zone. And they were asked to come up with one word that would help them kind of overcome anything that's happening. And I'm just going to quickly pass this around while I'm chatting about the rest of the day. But this says, "Nothing is impossible. The word itself says, 'I'm possible.'" And then they did a sand dollar project and all the kids drew one word on the sand dollar and they turned it into a heart project. So I'll just pass it around. I have a few more things to say.
We are second going, Lois. Are you going to hang it somewhere?
Well, I, we are going to hang it somewhere, but we haven't really decided where yet.
Okay.
So we'll find a very special place for it because it really culminates the whole project and in the school and all the kids and all the pictures and, yeah, it's, it's really cool. So that was in January. Let's see. We, the group, the Hatch Play Group's still going strong. Fridays, anybody want to join? Nine o'clock. Come on. It's a playgroup for zero to four years old. We also have Unified Basketball has started. Very exciting. Yeah, we have 45 kids signed up to play Unified Basketball. Forty-five. It is amazing. Yes. Our coaches are going strong. We get some grant funding for the coaches. And we're having a real game. And it is on February 19th, so it's next week. It is at 3 o'clock in the Hampton Academy. We are actually playing the other middle school who has a unified sports. We're playing Cooperative Middle School from SAU 16. So they're bringing their, their team over and we're going to have our team. We're going to have a really big crowd in the, at the gym. So it's going to be really fun for everybody. We got a $3,000 donation. I did put it in my packet. There's a check there. It is from YouthWell and that is for materials for our upcoming hatch. We're going to make some welcome baby bags and do a few other things with that, that donation. So I would welcome you to accept that donation. And included in my report is the Special Ed Trend Report. As you know, we get it once a year. You can just read it at your leisure. If you have any questions about it, I am certainly willing to answer anything you have about that. Numbers are holding steady. We're looking for staff. We have some postings out now for a school psychologist, a speech pathologist, a speech assistant, two case managers, one at the academy and one at Marston. A couple of pair of positions are still open at this very moment. Don't think I missed anything.
A quick question. Are those posted on Ed Jobs?
They are posted on Ed Jobs, but if you just put in the word Hampton, you don't see them all. So you're going to go in and kind of say, if you're looking for a case manager, then it'll come up. Or the, go in, write, put the position that you're looking for and then you'll see it. So if you just put Hampton, you might not see all of our postings. So if you're looking for one of those specific jobs, just put that into Ed Jobs. It'll take you right to our application, Appletrax. Our principals are looking at that daily.
So how are you covering all these positions?
Right. So right now, we, we worked really hard at the beginning of this year. We are contracting. Some of our staff are contracted. They are part-time. We have a part-time school psychologist instead of a full-time because contracting's more expensive. Same thing with speech at Center. We have a part-time pathologist there. So we had to get really creative with our service delivery. So at that point, and we did, we hired a regular interventionist at Marston to cover that position. And at Hampton Academy, we've been very creative. We have a remote case manager, which has been very challenging. We also have a teacher helping and I'm helping because it's eighth grade transition. We also have a teacher helping and I'm helping because it's eighth-grade transition. So, a lot of people are filling in these holes that we have had all year long. We hope to fill them, so please apply.
How are we doing on the caseload for the case managers? It does look like we actually had a pretty good little jump this month of nine.
So, we're doing, we're doing okay. I would say Marston is the most challenged at this moment because they, when we brought in a regular educator, we had to spread out the caseload to the remaining caseload, especially the teachers. So, it's, it can be very challenging, especially in this time of year with all the meetings that we have to hold. And I would just hope everybody would give us some grace and know that those case managers really are, they're having a lot of meetings and there's a lot of paperwork that goes along with all the meetings. But we are handling it. Anything else?
Does anybody have any more questions?
Okay. Thank you so much.
So, would you like to come on down? Wait, sorry, Tim Smith. Now, I have to be specific who we're looking for.
I know. They didn't listen to my request not to hire any other Tims.
I know, right?
I don't know why, but... So, in tech, we're just plugging along, supporting where we can. We've been working with some of the departments to identify aging tech and make recommendations for replacing it. I also feel like I should probably update you a bit on the Power School stuff. Basically, what we have found out through working with Power School is that we were unfortunately impacted by the breach. The message did go out to families as well as staff, letting them know what information was impacted. I do want to be clear that our goal with everything that we retain in our systems is to be the least amount of information required to have. So, that's just a policy that we follow across the board. We try to avoid having any extra information in there for the unfortunate situation like this. And then, beyond that, we have also reached out to Alma, our current SIS, to get a more detailed breakdown of what their security protocols are protecting us against those things. And they have gone above and beyond with laying out exactly what they have in place. I can't obviously share most of that because there's strict reasoning for it, but it is a lot, a lot more comforting knowing exactly what they have in place to help protect the information that we have on file. So, aside from that, just kind of focusing on looking at next year now and trying to figure out what kind of programs we might need to get in place, meeting with vendors to see if there's any potential opportunities for savings based on subscriptions. And that's pretty much what we're working on. So, open it up for any questions. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Harrington?
Evening all. So, I'm starting to gain on it a little bit, I think. I'm going to piggyback on Tim. I had a meeting with David and Nick and Incident IQ about possibly getting facilities onto their system, which would not be a bad thing for work orders and that type of stuff. So, we're having a conversation about that. And just sitting with Keith a lot, going over different projects that we have, the outside of the SAU office, which has been fun. Wrapping my head around that one. And Center School, we have a meeting on Friday with upgrades to the HVAC system. Yeah, just getting my, getting my feet in my head around all of those. We've had a lot of snow removal the last couple of days and we have more coming. Some spots getting to a point where we'll have to find somewhere to put the snow because piles getting pretty big, another five to eight inches this weekend. That's pretty much it for me. Still getting into it.
How is the Center School furnace?
Actually, we have a conversation about that, too. Mariah and I did about possibly getting some, getting an RFP out for that to get some redundancy on that. Right now, we just have the one boiler. So, looking at possibly getting two. We'll get quotes on that. We'll be sending something out.
So, you feel we have enough energy and power and stuff to get through the winter?
Yeah, yeah, we'll be fine. Right now, it's working. It's worked since the last time Palmer and Siccard was in, so I'm hoping it stays that way. But it wouldn't be a great idea to have some redundancy with that. Right now, we just have the one for that area of the school and most of the other areas have two. So, if one goes down, you still have the other one to take the load. So, we'll be, already have the bull rolling on that with Keith. I sat down with him and we reached out to some people, so, yeah.
More to come on that.
More to come. More to come on everything. Yeah. Got the meeting on Friday. I've had emails back and forth with the construction company that's been taking care of the SAU 90 front. They're hoping to get in over February break to do some things in there. Hoping.
What have you heard about the outside of the SAU office?
They were waiting on, apparently, the door that was put in was incorrect. So, they were waiting on that and that has been delivered, but parts for that door were not delivered with the door. So, they had to wait on those. The company was coming to do it and then found that they did not have all the parts. So, they had to wait on that. They do want to get in there. They talked about getting in there. She said something about her construction people being on vacation. So, they are hoping to get in before we go on vacation, but then, sheet-rocking, painting, that type of thing will hopefully be done during vacation. I'm not holding my breath on that from what I've seen, but hopefully, the door will be in place by then.
10% left.
Is there any adjustment to?
The bill?
The bill?
We've been, they did give us a credit.
They did.
They did give us a credit. We're working on that. I'm not paying anything until we have it complete. Yeah, the door that was in there, they put in temporary because it was going to take so long to get the door. And then, the door came in and, like you said, the parts are missing and it's been an interesting project. Nothing has been easy.
Yep. Correct. I need to do a complete review of the finances from start to finish on this to make sure that we...
Oh, yes. We have been looking at that. We have, the person that we hired to help do the bid and set up the project, he came in two weeks ago with you and Keith?
Two weeks, probably.
Two weeks ago. We've been looking at all that, yes.
Yeah. And I've been in contact with him also.
Thanks.
Any information they send me, I send to him, so.
It's a company I probably will not be using, unfortunately.
Any other questions? Good?
I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bork?
Hi, everybody. So, last month, Wendy, you had asked me to get a comparison from January student debt to the year before. So, this last school board report was, student debt was $5,534 and the January 17, 2024 was $5,352. But as of today, it is $3,412. And thank you, Emily Fixler. She really helped, helped call in parents, helped get, we had a couple more applications in. Heard talking to some parents that I've been trying and so, both of us teaming up, we got some applications in. But as of today, that's where we stand. Staff, eh, staff's still up there, 792, but well, like I said, they can't check out without paying and they pay their bills. Mariah usually gives them a last call. Pay up before your last check.
Or else it won't be as big as you expected.
Or else it won't be as big. So, that...
Congratulations, Mary.
Thanks. That was great, so.
That's a lot of work in this day and age to collect $2,000 in a month. It's a lot of work.
Yes. So, that's where we are.
Yeah, I think our plan is there are meeting bi-weekly, keeping an eye on it and going to report back monthly just so we can kind of keep a watch on it because we know June will sneak up, sneak up on us pretty quickly. But it's been great because it's actually, it's just been good to have the conversation with families and getting them the support they need or just reminding them, which is what some just needed. So, either way, I think it was an overall, a pretty positive process.
That was great. Great. So, thank you.
This article that we had in here, "Unpaid School Meal Debt Continues Nearly Decade-Long Rise." This was a very interesting article.
That's very interesting, that's why.
And I guess I'm wondering, who else needs to see this? This, I feel like, is something, especially where it talks about Maine, Massachusetts, Vermont, and the programs that they have that we don't have in New Hampshire. I just feel like somebody else needs to see this.
I think it's our state reps.
Yeah.
Honestly. I mean, I think there are, of the thousand or so bills that are in play right now, there are several that relate to school lunches. I think that one of them is changing. I think the requirement right now is that kids receive, I think it's for free lunch, kids receive lunch and they are looking to add breakfast to that, which I think we already do.
Right.
And there are also, there are always bills about increasing the...
Poverty levels.
The level from, from basically the federal poverty level to 300, 350%, which would be a huge benefit to us and to our kids. There are also some things about moving the, making sure that schools have online applications for free lunch programs.
Yeah.
And we have that already, yes.
Yes.
But what's interesting to note is we met with the PTA prior to this and we had a conversation. But one of the things that, in case you didn't know, I hate to put it out there and dampen the evening, but if you look at the 50 states, New Hampshire is number 50 in terms of how much money goes from the state to public education. So, there are 49 states in front of us. It's, it's this kind of stuff that does impact our children. It does impact meals and food and everything else. It's disappointing. And again, you know, we can only do so much locally. It does need to get to our reps and it has to go to Concord.
It also has to go to the population.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Because we can't be the only ones letting the reps know.
Well, you know, I think the message we had in the room was 90% of all children attend public schools. If just a fraction of those people made a little bit of noise, it would amount to a lot. And so, we were kind of having that conversation and saying, "Don't underestimate your voices." And what we saw is that people are now starting to address one of the bills that has to do with cutting things like music and art from education. And what did they say? 26,000 people weighed in on this one?
24,000 people, something like 99.4% of everyone who weighed in on the bill was against it.
Just on the local level, have we ever posted a link to the application on our SAU social media?
Not on our media, but it's on, but it is on our website. It is on Mary's, on her email.
Can we post the link on our social media, like, and promote people going on and filling it out just as another way?
Yeah.
To make sure people know how to do it.
I think we could. I'm kind of looking at that direction. Can we, Amber? Okay, fair enough.
But if we can, we will.
Yep. It is, but it is on our website. It is on your email, Emily's emails. We do try to get it out there. We send out, in my newsletter, I send it out all the time, but again, it doesn't always reach the people it needs to.
Do we advertise for Gather? Because Gather's with their food bus in the Hampton parking lot, municipal parking lot, behind, next to St. Vincent's Soup Kitchen from 11:00 to noon on Thursday.
I will, I believe Emily Fixler has that on her page, all the places locally that you can get food.
This is a great thing because it's a bus with fresh vegetables, fresh fruit.
It's a very good program.
Breads, pastries.
And you literally walk up to the bus, you walk in, you get your bag and you walk out.
They say hello, give you a bag. You do your shopping and then you leave.
No, they don't want to know your name. They want maybe a hi and a smile and a goodbye.
And if you can't do that, right behind the mullahs in Portsmouth is the Gather Store, which is the same operation. You go in the door, they say, "Hi, how are you today?" They give you a bag or a basket and you go shopping, no questions.
No questions asked.
So, that's something.
But I'll put it on my page, too. It doesn't hurt. It's on Emily's page, but I'll throw it, I'll put it on my page.
It's a great way for people to get food.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Kasten?
Okay. Just a few things, you know, just to, not to be redundant, but we obviously are continuing to review policies. We do have a meeting next Monday at 12:00 noon. We'll be specifically looking at Title IX, given some of the changes that are coming down the pipe with that one. So, we'll have some of those ready for you for next month. Obviously, we know that the winter has been challenging already. We're getting, in fact, more snow in the last, what, eight weeks than we got in the last two years. So, you can see, it's pretty challenging, as Tim has talked a little bit about, in terms of where we put it all. Very interesting, last Monday, just a little story in the sense that the plan was to come in at regular time, but unfortunately, one of the plows had a problem with clearing and therefore, they wound up calling, asking us to call a late, a delayed opening. And we always are going to work with our partners in the town and the DPW to ensure that they can clear the lot. So, we wound up doing that Monday. We are concerned about potentially this Thursday, it looks like we're getting, again, snow and more rain, but time will tell in terms of how that all shakes out. We are, to your point in the conversations we just had, hosting those, those roundtables with SAU 21. We did one on January 21st. This is an important time to be weighing in on where you stand with some of these bills that are before us. There are about 1,000 new pieces of legislation. There are about 250 that the New Hampshire School Boards Association is tracking. Many have to do with the things that we're talking about this evening, whether we're talking about food insecurities, or we're talking about funding, or we're talking about something else, just in terms of how we are supporting kids. So, it's a good time to kind of keep, you know, your ear to the ground and think about what matters to you and weighing in if there's something that you want to share. Mariah and I obviously attended the PTA. Tomorrow night, we will attend the Beach Precinct to just make sure we're answering questions and having conversations about our budget, about our warrant articles. We had a really great conversation earlier this evening. The PTA was actually, I thought, fairly well-attended and people had some great questions for us that we were able to talk about. So, we did that. Just to let you know that the U.S. Department of Labor Statistics has asked us to participate in a collection of information. And so, it's really about adding to their bank around the demands of a job. So, worked with our principals and department heads, including Dr. Lois DeSylvan Apton, just to ensure that we are adhering to all of those requirements. And then, of course, as you heard from our annual play day on this past week, we had really a great session with the Lane Library and the Anxious Generation and finished that up on Tuesday, February 4th. And at the end, there were about 30-something people there. So, it was one that really grabbed the attention, I think, of the community. We did do an exit slip. We're looking at what we might do for our next book read. We'll probably do one again next fall. It was just a great collaboration. We had a great group of people that were pretty committed to coming out and having these conversations. So, we'll do that again. Many thanks, of course, to our friends at Lane Library. Cameron just really enjoyed our time together and being with some of our community members in addition to the staff that showed up and our parents. So, great, great time was had by everyone. You know that this time of year, you know, your question is a great one, Ginny, where we're looking at the culture and climate. We know that, I've been watching the numbers in terms of the attendance and when the children get sick, we often get the staff who then get sick and it creates this domino effect. We've been watching it. It's been anywhere from 40 to 50, making it difficult with the substitution. But I would say overall, we're, we're doing the best we can to fill those positions when people are out. We are always looking for substitutes. You are welcome to fill that out. The application is on our SAU 90 website. We're happy to have you come and join us for as much or as little as you care to be. So, thanks for bringing that to everyone's attention. Tim has really got his feet wet, no pun intended, as he's jumped in on January 1st. Tim has really got his feet wet, no pun intended, as he's jumped in on January one and addressing the snow and doing a great job with his custodians. So we're appreciative of all they're doing with those early mornings and those sometimes late nights to keep the, obviously, the driveways, the walkways, clear and salted and sanded to ensure safety of everyone. We talked about our lunch program. The SROs are working on Alice training. This is a time of year that we do have to ensure that all our staff is updated with Alice training. We are looking at at least seventy-five percent trained on that. That's something that we continue to do under the direction of our SROs. Dr. Neil Campbell and Mr. Robitaille will be going to this two-day training over February vacation. So not an ex, too exciting of a February week, but I'm grateful that they're going to take the time to, to do that training. And then kind of looking at the curricula practice, you can see that we've done some mid-year reviews with our leadership team. We had a fifth-grade spelling bee, which, which was very exciting. We had January thirty-first, where Center and Margin School got together and was able to be a part of that, to talk about math programming and to think about piloting for next year. Mark Robitaille and Elizabeth Henderson are helping with that charge. They've got a great team that's working alongside of them to help pilot those programs that will include some visits to those schools that are actually implementing these programs. They have an extensive criteria for selection that I put there for your review. And then, of course, we are sending quite a few teachers to the Granite State K-8 Literacy Summit on March thirty-first, which is part of New Hampshire ASCD. And focus is specifically around literacy and strategy and the author of letters, which is a research-based, science-based program that Mark alluded to in his conversation earlier this evening in his report. So we're looking forward to those folks going. We have, we have about a team from each of the schools, so. And then, talked a little bit about that. And then the other thing is, is that next week, we'll have somebody come from the Department of Ed to continue to help us address our multi-tiered systems of support. And I think that's enough. We do have some donations to approve, so we'll do that. Under, we'll start with Mr. Mark Robitaille, a gift of thirty-six dollars and sixty cents from Box Tops. Thank you.
Oh, is that the one that has gone down so much?
Because you can no longer get them like you used to? Do you want to talk about it? Yep.
There's no more clipping.
Okay.
You have to get your, you have to have your phone, and then you have to scan, like, your, your grocery receipt.
Oh, okay.
It's not that it's hard to do, but I think people just don't, don't think about it.
You're right.
It's one more thing. And I've always thought it feels weirdly intrusive, to be perfectly honest, to send this company a picture of my grocery bill.
Yeah.
We do appreciate it.
The effort's made. Yep, we appreciative of that. Mr. Sadler has twenty-one dollars and ninety cents for Box Tops for education.
Second. Molly, Molly's second. Good. All in favor?
And then, Dr. Lois DeSilva-Naptin, we have three thousand dollars for the Hatch Initiative that's coming from YouthWell, New Hampshire, which will be for our, our littles and those newcomers that are born in Hampton. So it'll be a great little welcome gift.
I'll make, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Any questions from my report?
I had a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
So this US Department of Labor's, Labor Statistics.
Yes.
Have they come before?
No, it's a new one on me and my five years.
And why, why are they coming? Where did this come from and why?
They have all-new policies and laws that have gone through with the Labor Department. And I, and it has a lot to do with job descriptions. And that's what they were looking at, job descriptions. Like, we had to give them a list of certain positions that we had, and then they took that list and grabbed a handful of them and wanted to know what the job description was and what the job entailed.
And when did this occur?
Uh, last month-ish.
Yeah, in the last couple of weeks, I'd say.
In the last couple of weeks?
No, before, before that. It was longer ago than that, because we discussed it at the last
Yep, yep.
Which was three or four weeks ago.
Yep. Dr. DeSilva-Naptin, do
The outcome is there's an occupation handbook on a federal website.
Yeah, they're trying to
What they're trying to beef up.
Yep. Is update their federal handbook for occupational, right? Yeah.
And I had one more question. Representative from the DOE is coming to discuss what?
Multi-tiered systems of support as it relates to social-emotional learning. So just looking at how we can ensure that we have, what's our tier-one look like? What does tier-two, tier-three look like? It's just our ongoing efforts in terms of how we are addressing the needs of our students behaviorally.
And is this something that's happened on a regular basis in the past?
It has. It's been, it's been their ongoing issue. We looked at multi-tiered systems of support with academics, and now they're looking at behaviors. In fact, I know that the school counselors were just admitted into their training. They've been trying to get into their training, which is constantly hard to get into. And they just, I just got word from Mrs. Cornell at Center School that they were able to get in. And it's just to help them organize what they might do for tier-two interventions, tier-three interventions.
It's, you know, obviously great, but so why is it so hard to get into? Do you not have, do they not have enough people as trainers?
They, there is the need, and then there is only so many people. That's exactly it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is this New Hampshire DOE?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so it's not the federal.
Nope, nope. It's, it's New Hampshire Department of Ed. And it's something that they're, they've been interested in, and they just feel like it might be another way to, to support their efforts. Yeah.
Any more questions for Lois? Then I think we would like to welcome is Lori Cotter and, looks like maybe Ms. Pat Bushway to talk to us about the Hampton Historical Society's one-hundredth anniversary.
Hello to all.
Hello.
And for those of you that don't know me, I am Lori Cotter and president, coming to you as president of the Historical Society, this tonight. And Pat Bushway introducing my vice president to you. What I'd like to do is do a really brief, quick overview of some of our activities. Then I need to ask a favor, and then Pat's going to get up and ask a question to you as well, if I may. It's our birthday. We are celebrating a hundred years. One hundred years of an historical society. We were founded in nineteen twenty-five. This is twenty-twenty-five, and we have all kinds of events, because adults have to play, too. That was a good follow-up there. The first event that we're going to kick off things is, we have a documentary that is called The History of the Hampton Historical Society, produced by Karen Rains and Mike Garland. They have done a phenomenal job. That will be shown at the Legion Hall on April fifth. And I do have a handout to give you so that you'll have all these dates, so you don't need to take notes. We have a trolley tour of Hampton sites that is coming in June. And your very own Jack Hafey is writing this tour, and he is conductor of the trolley tours as well. He's very excited about it. Of course, we have a vintage baseball game that will be played at Tuck Field in August. On September twentieth, we have a speakeasy night, which will incorporate all of our buildings at Tuck Museum as well. The big event is in May. It is a roaring twenties jazz dance. We have a twenty-piece jazz band coming, and we are using this facility. We have set this up before. We had talked to Keith. I met with Tim. We have this facility that we're going to be using. What the favor is to ask you, because we were told there is a fee to use this facility, can we waive the fee, or could you waive it for us? I'm going to kind of set it up in a way of saying that we do a lot of field trips for all the schools here in Hampton. We have the first graders, we have the third graders, we have eighth graders come over, the ones that don't go on trips. And we also do the poetry night for the seventh and eighth graders. We do not get compensated for that. We haven't in a long time. I think the PTA used to fund some of the field trips or help us out with that. We are a nonprofit. We do everything on our own. We run through membership. So we're asking, yeah, a big favor, if we could have the facility.
I make a motion to waive the fee for the Historical Society, so they, they can have the roaring twenties dance.
And everyone, please come. Costumes welcome. This will be a really fun night.
I just had a question before.
Wait, wait, hold on. Let me, I was gonna, I was just gonna second it.
Oh, go ahead.
That's all. I'm just seconding the motion. Go ahead.
Are, are you talking about this room?
This cafeteria.
This cafeteria.
Correct. Yeah.
How much are we talking?
We're not going to go over a hundred people.
No, I mean, how much is the fee that we're getting?
We don't know what the fee is.
Oh, we were told three hundred and fifty dollars to rent the facility.
Okay.
Have you spoken with Tim Harrington about it?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we already are in meetings with him, and we have gone through it and gone through the whole scenario of what we're, what we're using.
And this is open to the public?
Yes, it is. Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, more advertising will come out. We wanted to make sure you people knew about this first, before everything came out, and we are good to go. We've got the plans. It's, it's going to be a fantastic night. It'll be really fun.
Mr. Shepherd needs some time to get his outfit together.
Yes, please.
We need a hat, snazzy suit, and some good shoes.
Yeah. Does anybody have any quick questions on any of the events or whatever? We'd love to have volunteers and help and, you know, anything that you'd like to, to help out with.
All, all in favor of waiving the fee?
Thank you. I'll introduce Pat Bushway.
Thanks, Lori.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for your time. We appreciate it. In addition to the events that Lori just talked about, one of the projects that we did for the one-hundredth anniversary is the anniversary quilt. We had a team of quilters who handmade every step of the quilt, to include tying it. So it was a group of close to thirty people who all contributed. And as you can see in the picture, it's, it's not a great picture, but the, the quilt squares are buildings and things on exhibit at the museum. And what I wanted to suggest to you and ask for your consideration of is, we, we see the quilt as a, a great tool for teachers to use to teach Hampton history. And, and in particular, the, the students that come to visit the museum, they will see those items that are on the quilt before they come to the museum. The, the quilt is going to be on display at various locations. It spent December and January at the Rec Center. It is currently at the library and will be till the end of March. If, if possible, we, we would like to, to suggest that we have the opportunity to, to get it into the schools in, in April. And, and we, we set it up. We've got a quilt rack. It, it, it's, it's all, it's, it's, it's self-sufficient. We'll, we'll bring it to you. So just something that I, we would like you to consider, because I think it would be a great tool to teach Hampton history.
Do you have a preference for where it would be? Like, would you want it at, like, rotate it? What would you do?
Well, I, I think it might be best if we started at Marston, because that, that would probably coincide best with the school visits for their, for their tours later on in the spring. So, you know, I, I, I think they can see things on the quilt that then they're going to be able to see at the museum. And I, and I, and we, but it can then, can go to, can come here, can go to the Center School. But I, I personally think Marston would be the best place to start.
I think that makes a lot of sense with their field trip grades, so.
Teachers could use it in their, you know, to, for their classrooms.
Yep, sounds great.
Okay.
I don't think we need to, we don't have to
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you for your time.
We appreciate it.
If, if I could?
Of course.
Just wanted to thank both of you
Yes.
and everybody that works with you for all you do. Thank you.
I love the pictures, by the way. We have many.
Yes. Right?
You have many. The library has many. Yeah. It's great. Thanks.
Mr. Smith, please join us.
Hello again. So I'm just looking to give you a quick update on the state of AI in the district, because I know it's a big topic these days, very buzzword. So basically, I'm just going to kind of go through possible benefits of implementing it, and then current state of what we're doing within the district. So, just to start, what is generative AI? It's artificial intelligence that creates new content based on the data that has been trained on. As a result of prompting or your inquiry into the system, it uses the knowledge that it has to generate a custom response for you. Some examples would be ChatGPT, DALL-E, which is the image generation package related to ChatGPT, and then music tools as well. Some other ones you would hear about would be Gemini or Notebook LM. So potential benefits, enhance creativity and learning. It allows new avenues for students to explore their creativity and kind of ask questions in a way that they feel comfortable with to gather information, as well as give them the opportunity to generate original content related to images and music. And then also, writing. Personalized learning experience, it can act as a tutor, which is the, one of the biggest areas of focus for it being implemented within schools. They feel that, in general, the utilization of a personal tutor to every student would enhance learning outcomes overall. And then reduced administrative workload. It would allow teachers the opportunity to utilize the programs for either filler activities or to write lesson plans or additional content generation for activities within the classroom. And that's all done via easy prompting. And basically, you put a couple of statements into a system, and it can output exactly what you're looking for based on the curriculum that you're working with, the content area that you're focused on, whatever it is that you're putting into the system. Potential pitfalls would be concerns regarding academic integrity. This is a big area of concern, because theoretically, a student could easily use AI to write their entire report. The tools that are currently available for testing and evaluating whether or not something is generated by AI are not reliable on a consistent basis. People have done tests where they've put in a fully-written paper by a person and fully-written by AI, and it'll read it as the complete opposite. So it's not a reliable tool for proving out whether or not there is actually plagiarism or the use of AI as the solution. Misinformation and inaccurate content. So basically, you're looking at AI as something that's trained on information. So if it has bad information, the outcome is more bad information. Also, some of the systems can develop a bias in the way that they're trained. So then the output of information is also slightly biased. And then, of course, there's the concern of over-reliance on technology. So there's no critical thinking skills needed, no social interaction for kind of workshopping ideas. You're basically just relying on the program to do it all for you, or you're interacting exclusively with the program for feedback on your initial drafts of anything that you or you're interacting exclusively with the program for feedback on your initial drafts of anything that you've written or worked on. The current state in our district. The only AI tools that students have access to would be those that are built into programs that we utilize. We don't actively seek them out for the students to use. Some classes have started using the Conmigo aspect of Con Academy, which is provided to us by the state. But there aren't too, too many people who are using it and it's a very controlled program, the way that that is actually used. And staff have been trained on some AI tools. It's very informal training, which we would be happy to have a session with the board to go over just what we've worked on. So the tools that they've been trained on a little bit would be Magic School AI, Gemini, which is included in our Google, and Conmigo, which, as I mentioned before, is within the Con Academy. So key considerations as we move forward. If we were to implement AI within the district, clearly we have to have a when and how set up. So when are we using it and how is it allowed to be used for students? As well as clear expectations as to how it is used. And also to make sure that the students are still using it as a tool rather than the one source for doing all of their work. As with everything these days, data privacy plays a key role into it because AI is trained on the information that it's accessing. So a lot of programs are geared towards thirteen and older, eighteen and older. And it's because they're taking that information and then using it to train their AI and also reselling the data as needed. There are programs that do restrict that access and there are programs that are willing to sign data privacy agreements, but that comes at a cost. They only do it for paid subscriptions, which can be quite costly. And then, of course, there's the balance of human interaction along with the utilization of the tool. So we would, we can see value in it being used by teachers for administrative support tasks. But at what point do we feel like it's necessary to actually allow it as a tool within the district for students to utilize? So as I move to conclusions and recommendations, I will say one thing that we would need to have complete buy-in on if we were to decide to move forward with AI in the district. We need to determine exactly where it would be utilized, at what grade levels, what age levels. And we would also need to work with Winnicott High School because we would be setting the students up for failure if we encourage them to utilize tools here and train them to use tools here that then they're not allowed to use when they get there. So currently, I would suggest that we maintain what we're doing, allowing teachers to be trained and get used to using the tools. The state is currently meeting and working on recommendations and guidelines. They plan to have a detailed breakdown of their recommendations out by the end of this year. They also have an AI summit coming up in March, which we will be attending. Related laws and guidelines. We're staying up to date on those as much as we can. Currently, the recommendation is if you were to implement a policy, they suggested that we look at Bedford School District or Pinkerton Academy. We have spoken to people at Bedford schools and they don't currently have a policy. They have rolled it into their academic honesty area of their student handbook. So it outlines the use of AI there rather than it being its own standalone policy because it can get kind of tricky when you get into implementing a policy for what is effectively a subscription program because then we would have to be looking at that for all of the subscription programs that we are in fact using within the district. And ultimately, it would be beneficial for us to consider forming a committee to look at whether or not it's something that we wanted to do moving forward. We would need to have a committee across grade levels, all three schools, probably sending out surveys to parents and teachers because one of the biggest things we would need to decide on before we were to move forward is are teachers all in support of it? Because ultimately, it's going to fall on our teachers to be responsible for teaching the students how to interact with it as well as overseeing how the kids will interact with it. Because the programs that we would generally be using are going to be more directly involved for them with their instruction.
And we're talking really more the older students, correct? Just to?
Yes, so.
Just be clear on that one.
Yeah, so everything that we've found out so far, there are some programs that are approved for K through twelve. But for the most part, most of the studies that you find, kids between kindergarten and second grade don't really understand the concept of what AI is and trying to explain that on top of the fact that they're just trying to learn everything about the world and school and how to be present in school. So the focus is generally three, in third grade and up. But even third and fourth grade really have a tough time with interactions with it. They don't understand, understand all the concepts of it. So fifth grade is where they find the most benefit, fifth grade moving up. But it, again, it's something that you have to deal with on a case-by-case basis, what tools you're looking at using and what guidelines they have in place because there are some that don't allow for use under the age of thirteen. And I mean, we only have roughly seventy students by the end of the year who reach that age. So for us to implement it across the whole district would seem pretty questionable in that situation, so. But that's where we're at right now and it is something that we're consistently looking at because it's everywhere we look these days. But if you have any questions, more than happy to answer.
I thought it was important to bring it to our attention because there is a lot of conversation about this and I know that we were invited, Tim and I, to this summit by the state and we're, we're gonna be there in attendance just to hear what they have to say. We're a pre-K grade eight district. I think we have a little bit of time, but it's also good to stay on top of what's happening to know what we might want to do, where this might want to go. So just today's kind of a, an introduction, an overview, just to let you know that it is, this is on our radar. I know that in my other hat, when, as a, somebody who works in higher ed, this is huge when you're talking higher ed, for sure, for all the reasons you say. Something that, you know, colleges and universities are, have to develop policies, you know, like yesterday, they did. Most do and are. But it is, it's something that we as educators want to just make the public aware that this is also on our radar and something we're kind of monitoring.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have the calendar on our calendar again?
Yeah.
Did we made any changes or progress with it?
We, we did. We made a few minor changes and I'm noticing that one isn't there. So you can take a look that on page forty-seven, we are close to finalizing this calendar. There is one change that I want to make and that is April first. It should be April third because the decision was, was that we would do the Friday before Easter. So I think next year in the two thousand twenty-six, it might be the fifth. So I just want to check that Easter day for us because we said we want to align it to be a long weekend. But otherwise, we try to align with Winnicott that has to align with the CECO School of Technology. And they have it finally, they were able to finalize it. So it gives you a sense of where, where we would, where we would be, what the vacations would be, what the releases would be, et cetera, et cetera. So just a draft for you to look at. I'm just, I just want to double-check when Easter is, but otherwise. And I did share it with the, the union too. We had an opportunity to take a look at it as well.
I think we're close. Funny, we used to approve this in like October, November. March school board meeting, so we do need to look at pushing back the meeting because as always, our meeting day falls on town election day. And I wondered honestly if there was, do we need to vote on this every year, right? Can this just be something that we move that if the, excuse me, if town meeting is the second Tuesday in March, every single year it's an RSA, then why not just put it on the school board calendar that our March meeting will always be the third, the third Tuesday in March?
Unless there's a contested, and then it's ten days after the election.
Right, which, I mean, honestly, we would have to deal with that on a year-by-year basis anyway, so.
But we won't know that until.
Right, so we could push that out if we needed to. So I don't know that we necessarily need to vote on that for anything, but I don't know. It just seemed to be common sense. Do we need to vote to move the meeting? That's what I can't remember.
I'm not sure we need to vote, but we should at least announce it like now. I don't, I don't know that date. What is the date?
It's March eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
So town meeting is on March eleventh and we will be moving our meeting to March eighteenth. Yes. Dr. Costa has something on practice and protocols for visitors of the school.
Right, so I have a handout for you to take a look at. This was something that came up about a week or so ago, given some of the changes that are happening in our, in our country. And just to be prepared, ESOL teachers reached out to me and principals were concerned. We just wanted to have a clear protocol in terms of what we would do and it was recommended that we at least bring this to your attention. I did share this with Chief Reno just to let him know that this is where we were at and he, you know, he was, he was fine with it. At this time, SROs cannot get involved until we get an MOU with the AG's office. So they are not to be involved with this. So this is something that it would involve the school principals, the secretaries of the front office staff, as well as myself. I just wanted you to be aware of that. This is something we talked about at our leadership meeting and wanted you to just be aware of the protocol, which is supported by, you can see, policy KI, JRA, and policy, it should say ACA, so, or AC. So it's just logistics for you.
Did this come from the School Board Association or is it going to at some point?
So we've reached out to them for, this actually came from the Association of, of School Administrators at the national level. And it also was supported by Drummond and Woodson. So because their advice was to seek out legal counsel and so what I did was reached out to our attorney's office and you know Mike Elwell is retiring. They didn't have a lot of guidance for me at the time, just because they're working through it. So I was able to get ahold of, just so you know, my process, which was pretty extensive. I actually was able to get ahold of Drummond and Woodson's, their advisory. And I was also able to access the Schools Superintendent's Association, AASA. And then was actually with our leadership team, we were able to be very familiar what judicial and administrative warrants look like. So there was some conversations at our recent leadership meeting about that as well. So I just think that we want to be prepared because there was a situation that was brought to my attention that told me that we should just be prepared.
Do you want to make sure the public knew what you were talking about? Okay, well said then.
Nope, it's, it's, it's more internal. It's really about visitors.
I think you, you probably should go over this with the secretaries because they're gonna play a crucial role and it might be not comfortable for them.
And I'm, I'm looking at my leadership team and they already, they are very well aware of it, which is why last Wednesday, we had a very in-depth conversation, went over Drummond and Woodson's advice. And then, of course, I wanted to get it to a one-pager for you folks. You tell me it's good to go and I will make sure they have it. But it's just a condensed version of what they already have. But they, they're very well aware that it would more than likely be, it would be the school secretaries of the front office, but the, the most important part of it all is that the, the difference is in what the warrants look like, but also that I would need to be notified and we would probably need to make sure that legal counsel was involved to ensure that all rights were protected.
Are they doing trainings on this, Lois?
Nope, not at this time. Not at this time.
Well, you should, Lois had to pull information from a lot of different sources to get us to this point.
I understand, but this is a scary situation for.
A hundred percent, yes.
Yeah, you know, for secretaries. I mean, it's scary for administration, but at least part of their duty is this. And secretaries, it's a whole different ballgame.
Right.
So I think somebody should, at least from our district, go over with them and say, as we.
They have, yes. I believe that that has, has already, has already occurred.
Yep.
I see.
And of course, it won't, won't get home.
I've heard three different administrators, a quarter of them all nodding their heads.
We had conversations with them. There's a situation just to call the building principal. There's just a principal right away and just keep them outside. So it's not really getting involved. Their job's just to call that building admin and we take over from there.
Okay, who gets their, um, their IDs and that stuff?
It would probably have to be, well, we always ask for everybody's ID. You cannot enter the building unless you have an ID. That is not anything new to visitors.
Okay, but do they check it at a remote, like from a computer camera?
No, they would do it through the airlock. So you would have that and then what would happen is.
Same stuff.
Yeah, it is. And then they would just go out and meet them because you, you know that we, nobody comes to the school unless they have a specific reason and purpose. Right? So based on what was said, it would be the principal, assistant principal, and myself that would then go from there.
Okay, so the secretary would just check their IDs and that and then wait for the administration to come.
Correct.
And you and the administration will take, do, take it from there?
Yep. Yep, and, and if I'm not here, it would, might be Mariah.
Oh, that would be a great day for her.
Or Dr. Lois Silbernaptin. I mean, I think that's, you know, we, you know, we just want to be prepared because I think there was the leadership's feelings that we should be.
Yeah, you never know because we may have someone we don't even know about.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so in my packet this month, I did add grant information. I picked IDA for this year and gave you the breakdown of what we were utilizing the grant for. I will do Title I and then Title II and so on. I had not done this since last year, but we were really just trying to get all the grants encumbered and such, and we did. And I figured I'd start giving you the breakdowns again. I am posting the revenue report on our website and talking about our website. I would like to let you know that we've been getting a lot of phone calls from the town and emails of people not really knowing where our budget and stuff is on the website. So I want to talk quickly about that. If you go to SAU ninety and you go to operations and then business office and voting information, that's really where you'll find all my information that I put up there. So the MS twenty-sevens, MS twenty-twos, the warrant article, our budget. You can find the budget presentation. You can find the budget flyer. You can find the budget estimate cost per thousand, the budget summary. It's all under that section in our, on our website. And you'll also, we'll find the two or three years past. So we just got our audit back from two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. That's posted on our website too, so you can look at that. But it's a lot of information on our website and I think it's, it's easy to find, but I think people are having a hard time finding it. You definitely need to go under operations, then business office, and then you'll find it.
So you aren't planning to do any publicity on the warrant article? So you aren't planning to do any publicity on the warrant articles, one through four? You know how you did those little short things?
Oh, we, we have a video. We will post that on our public channel. We were hoping to have it done for today to show you, but we didn't. Hopefully tomorrow, we'll be able to present it at the precinct. That's the goal. We'll probably have it on Facebook, so you can click on it. We'll have it in spots. We just got it completed today, so.
That should be easier for people.
Yes, I think it'll break it down a little bit easier for everybody. The annual report is done. I will have the technology department help me post that on our website tomorrow. Each school will have it. So I've already dropped some off here. Center School and Marston School will have the annual report. Tomorrow, it will be dropped off at the library and the town hall. The warrant article is also posted at all those, those locations also. But it's also on our website. There's a lot of information on there. I think that if, if you can't find it or if you need a little bit more information, feel free to contact me. We also added this year because we do have the C agreement and the CESA agreement on our warrant articles, that I posted that under our, our website too on the adjustments of the agreements. So people could see that and see the salary schedules that were voted on. I think to be very open to see what that is, that's on there. So all of our teacher agreements are on that. So the one that we're working on now is on our website, so you can compare them. Pretty much every school district has agreements on their website. So if there's question on that our salary schedule isn't, as up to date as everybody else is around surrounding towns, you definitely can find that information on other towns to compare. So if you have that time, search other SAUs. Check our SAU out, check our salary schedule out. And if there's questions, feel free to contact Lois and I. You know, this, the budget's very important to us. And our teachers are important to us, and our paras are important to us. And if there's questions and people have, don't understand the numbers or where we're getting them, or why, or the hows, feel free to contact us. I think it's important. We're very open and try to, to give as much information as we possibly can.
The paras have done a great job with their ads. They really have featuring.
Yeah. So other than that, do you have any questions?
I have something under enrollment, just to keep on your mind, just so you know. So we got in a butters notice, and I just wanted to make you aware that there was a public hearing on Wednesday, February 5th. And because we are butters to this one Liberty Lane, just so you know, they are, there's a plan to build 248 apartment units in three buildings. One would be renovated, two would be new with associated amenities, including a network of multipurpose trails, a dog park, and children's play areas. So I just wanted you to be aware of that, that should that go through, we would probably see an uptick in enrollment based on that.
It was front page of CECO's news tonight.
Yep. It's on Liberty Lane. 248 apartments, and they're going to be family-friendly, just based on that description. So an butters notice that we got February 5th, just to be aware of it.
Have any requirements or anything we can do?
I do, just to let you know that we, we are, we are moving Amber Levine from interim status to AP status. We finished our interviews, and we had a nomination, and it was unanimous. And so just to let you know that the process was done pretty diligently. And just to let you know, she's moving into, from interim status to full-time AP status. So just wanted to make you aware of that one. You don't, but I'd just like you to, I wanted you to be aware. I thought that would be, was important for you.
I mean, that'll be when we do contracts.
Yep, yep, so when you, yeah, so you'll see that, she'll be on the slate.
All right, policy review. We've got a stack of first reads. Have to do anything with those, but if you guys want to take a look at them. Have any questions, let us know.
I, I did have a question on JJ, sorry.
No, go ahead.
JJIC.
Yes.
Has more so the middle school principal, assistant principal, athletic director, and a few coaches looked at that carefully?
Yes, we, in fact, always, yes, absolutely, yep. Yep, thanks for asking. But we do, any, any policy that's related to us, an individual or a group, we, we always get it out, like if it's nurses or you name it, counselors. We want to make sure that they're aware of it because it impacts them directly. So thank you.
Hold on to those, bring them back next month.
And by the way, our, we have a new form on that reporting child abuse and neglect. Our counselors will be going up to the Department of Ed to get that training because there's a little bit, some changes with that one too. They signed up for it.
Is this one that is on?
Yeah. It's, it's, it's just revised, you'll see. There's not, the reporting form's a little different. It's minor, but we just want to make sure we're doing our due diligence, yeah.
Meeting minutes. Let's look at the draft of the regular school board meeting on January 14th.
I'd move that.
Any have any questions or changes? All those in favor?
We had an abstention.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sorry, one abstention, four, four yes. And non-public minutes from January 4th.
I'd move those.
Any need to seal those?
I don't think so.
I think we're good. All in favor?
We had one abstention.
And what abstention, yes. Do we have anyone here for public comment on agenda items? Like to call public session under RSA 91-a32A. Roll call vote required?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.